Councilmember Brightingam?
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yeah.
Councilmember Tran?
Yeah.
Councilmember Munyaton?
Here.
Councilmember Aristegui?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dovin?
Present.
And Mayor Klumpenstein?
Here. We are going to start with our invocation led by our Assistant City Manager, Matt West, and then if I could have Councilmember George Brightingam lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, as we gather this evening, may we do so with open hearts and thoughtful minds. Grant us the grace to listen with care, to speak with respect, and to engage one another with integrity. Let us take a moment to honor all who shaped the fabric of our city: individuals, families, local businesses, and community organizations, each adding their unique voice and strength to the vitality of our shared life. May we remain mindful of our collective responsibility to foster a city that uplifts all, and as we deliberate, may our choices be guided by wisdom, compassion, and an enduring commitment to the common good. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Anyone please face the flag, hand over heart, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Councilmember Brightingam for the Housing Authority.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we have roll?
Commissioner Aristegui?
Here.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Klumpenstein?
Here.
Commissioner Munyaton?
Here.
Commissioner Philip Nguyen?
Yeah.
Commissioner Tan Nguyen?
Yeah.
Commissioner Tran?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Dovin?
Present.
And Chair Brightingam?
Here. Okay. We will open up oral communications. Is there anybody who wants to address the Housing Authority? Seeing none and having no cards, I will close oral communications and we'll move on to Consent Item 1, which is in concurrence with the City Council Item. Correct?
We can do Item 1 and 2 under the consent calendar if you want to.
Oh, sure. We'll do Items 1 and 2.
Move it.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Commissioner Aristegui?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Klumpenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Munyaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Philip Nguyen?
Yes.
Commissioner Tan Nguyen?
Yes.
Commissioner Tran?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dovin?
Aye.
And Chair Brightingam?
Yes.
Motion received, nine yes votes.
Do we have any matters from Commissioners?
None.
None? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn the Housing Authority and move back to Council.
Thank you. We do have several presentations this evening. We will start with number one, which is a Community Spotlight in recognition of Dr. Tru McMahon for being named Cypress College 2025 Americana Awards Garden Grove Citizen of the Year, and I believe our Assistant City Manager, Matt West, will read that spotlight for us.
Yes, thank you. So again, this evening, the Garden Grove City Council recognizes an inspiring individual whose commitment to service has earned her the prestigious title of Garden Grove Citizen of the Year from the Cypress College 2025 Americana Awards. This time, I'd like to invite up Dr. Tru McMahon, if you would mind coming up. Each year, Cypress College honors individuals from the eight surrounding cities that form the college's primary service area at their annual Americana Award Ceremony. Honorees are selected for their outstanding humanitarian, philanthropic, and partnership efforts with their communities. Dr. Tru was born in Vietnam and immigrated to the United States at the age of seven. She began her healthcare journey as a nurse, where her passion for medicine inspired her to attend Baylor College of Medicine. She completed her residency at Olive View UCLA Medical Center and has since dedicated her medical career to serving the Garden Grove community. Today, Dr. Tru serves as the Medical Director of the Emergency Department at both Fertility and Garden Grove Hospital Medical Center, as well as Fertility's Memorial Care Outpatient Hospice in Pol- I don't know how to say this word.
Palliative?
That one. Care Services. Outside of her medical career, Dr. Tru is an active member of the Garden Grove community. She currently serves as a Chair of the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Board and is also a Board Member of the Garden Grove Community Foundation and RX Ballroom Dance. Dr. Tru's contributions have earned her numerous honors, including being named one of Orange Coast Magazine's Top Doctors in 2021, receiving the Garden Grove Service Excellence Award, and Woman of Distinction Award from the House of Representatives, and being recognized as the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce 2021 Director of the Year. At this time, the Mayor and City Council would like to present Dr. Tru McMahon with a resolution in honor of her meritorious recognition as 2025 Garden Grove Citizen of the Year. The city thanks her for her service and dedication to the Garden Grove community. Congratulations.
One heck of a dancer.
Thank you so much.
Do I come up there?
I just wanted to say thank you so much for recognizing this. The only reason I accepted this award was to highlight what we do for each other. We support each other, and I support Cypress Community Foundation. I think that the future is in our children's hands, and education is so important. That's why I said, okay, yes, please, thank you, all at once. So, thank you very much.
I'm on call. I have to go take a patient call, sorry.
Thank you, Dr. McMahon. We will move on to Presentation Number 2, which is a Community Spotlight in recognition of the 2024 Republic Services Sustainability Award recipients, and Assistant City Manager, Matt West, will read the spotlight once again.
Thank you, yes. Next, the Garden Grove City Council would like to recognize local businesses and organizations for being the recipients of the 2024 Republic Services Sustainability Champion. The Sustainability Champion Program created by Republic Services recognizes local businesses and organizations that have implemented long-term, sustainable practices to support environmental stewardship. Honorees are selected based on leadership and sustainability, community impact, and an ongoing commitment to eco-conscious operations. This year's recipients have demonstrated dedication to waste reduction, recycling, and compliance with California's environmental regulations. Their efforts have not only improved their own operations, but also inspired others in the community to adopt greener practices. Through meaningful and lasting changes, they've shown a strong commitment to environmental responsibility. We'd first like to acknowledge the following honorees who are unable to join us this evening: Grace Food Catering, Outback Steakhouse, and St. Luke's Orthodox Church. At this time, we now invite the representatives from the following businesses and organizations to come forward and remain at the front for a group photo. BBQ Chicken Garden Grove, Costco Wholesale, Jay's Catering, Our Redeemer Lutheran Church, San Yeo Foods Corporation of America, Sprouts, Farmer's Market, and that's it. At this time, the Mayor and City Council would like to present each of these outstanding businesses and organizations with their certificate in recognition of their environmental leadership. First, we would like to invite up Brandon Garcia from Republic Services to the podium to share a few words.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Honorable City Council and the residents of Garden Grove. My name is Brandon Garcia. I'm the Municipal Manager of Sales for Republic Services and part of the dedicated team that oversee the Waste filing franchise contract for the city of Garden Grove. In 2024, 24,000 tons of organic waste was diverted from landfills, all coming from right here in the city, and that number includes 2.1,000 tons of food waste. The city, the businesses standing here today, along with the thousands throughout the city, helped to make that happen, and it's something that the city should be very proud of. However, we are specifically recognizing the group of businesses standing here tonight because they have taken specific steps to go above and beyond, to take sustainability serious, and move the environment in the forefront of the city of Garden Grove. Okay? Our sustainability advisors visited the entire city to look for businesses that went the extra mile to be sustainable. Some of those areas that we're recognizing today include the following: establishing an internal infrastructure system for separated solid waste recycling and organics; designated an internal team within their business operation to oversee and manage the education outreach and training of their staff on proper waste sorting; maintain a clean environment, both inside and outside of their enclosures; and of course, through verifiable site visits, these locations have demonstrated effective waste diversion resulting in reduction of cross-contamination. So, that is why today, we wanted to acknowledge the organizations here this evening as sustainability champions and present you with the following award. In addition to this award, we would like to commend your hard work by providing your business a $200 credit toward the cost of your next service. So, once again, thank you. We will be doing this again next year, and looking forward to it.
Well, I think it's a very apropos day since it's Earth Day to be able to celebrate the environmental responsibility and sustainability in our city, so that was a great presentation.
Now, we know who has the cleanest garbage in the city.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. All right, we'll move on to Presentation Number 3, which is an update on the Civic Center Revitalization Project requested by our City Manager, Lisa Kim.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. We have Project Executive Craig Beck that will lead off the update and then I would and turn over the balance of the update to our Edgemore team as well. Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Really pleased to be in front of you this evening to talk about this wonderful project that you see coming out of the ground right across the street. We have some information that we want to share with you, a little bit of an update on the construction progress to date, and then a design update on the park. Wanted to thank those of you that were able to make the topping out ceremony that we had. It's pretty exciting to think that from groundbreaking to where we are now, topping out the height of the building was achieved in less than 18 months is something worth celebrating, and we'll get into some of those details in this presentation, and Christina's going to walk us through that.
Councilmembers, thank you so much for your time tonight to give an update on the Civic Center Revitalization Project. I think we have some content. Fantastic. Tonight, we're going to talk through two things, as Craig mentioned. We'll give a brief update on the Phase 1 construction progress. As you can see, the site is transforming every single day. It's really exciting to see everything coming out of the ground. You'll start to see the building getting closed pretty soon, and then after that, we will talk through Phase 2 of the project, which is the park, and we will give up an update on the design progress of that. So, for construction, I'll hand it over to Keith, and he'll give you an update.
Thank you. As you can see in this timeline here, this is the Phase 1 high-level construction schedule. We've completed all the work that's below the surface, and since end of December, we've been focused on bringing the building vertical. And just a couple of weeks ago, as Craig mentioned, we topped out, which is a huge celebration for the project, and just a couple photos of that topping up celebration. Appreciate, again, City Council, city leadership, city staff for joining us, Edgemore and Clark, to recognize the labor force and supporters of the project, current council members and past council members who were able to make this project happen with their support. So, some of these photos here are just showing that great event. And then just a couple of construction photos. So, we've completed most of the utilities on-site below the surface, so you can see that there's just a lot of underground, below-the-soil kind of work. Couple more photos of utilities that are entering the site from the right-of-way on the street. And then, this past month, we've been kicking off and starting masonry work, so all the CMU block that you see on the backside of the building slowly wrapping around the first level of the building in these photos here. So, that's the construction update. I'll hand it back to Christina.
And I will talk a little bit about the park design. Every time we've spoken, there's been a bit of an evolution in how the park is coming together, so we're excited to show you what's been updated since we last met. So, as usual, we'll start with the overall site plan just for grounding. So, this is our site plan. On the left-hand side is where the public safety facility is and parking structure. To the north of that is the library, and if you travel to the east is the CMC, the building we're in right now, and just south of that is where the new park will be. That park will get constructed after PD has moved from their building into the new building, and we can demolish the existing police department, which will allow for this beautiful park. So, as we've talked about before, the park really centers around a large event lawn, which will be a space that can be used for several different programs, and then so we'll just talk through some of the amenities around the park that surround this event lawn. So, starting at the northeast, there's an area for fitness equipment. There's currently fitness equipment in that area. We will be replacing the existing equipment and adding some new machines, and if we can continue down, anchoring that event lawn is a beautiful event stage. This can be used for movies, concerts, Tai Chi, all sorts of things to be programmed in this area. And then behind that, in a quieter part of the park, is where the Memorial Grove will be. We'll relocate some of the existing public art that was in the existing Civic Center Park to this area as well. And then if we continue to travel to the west, we have a beautiful entry plaza, which will really mark the entry to this park, give it a sense of place. We'll have beautiful pavement, palm trees, and we're working through some designs on a landmark sign there as well. We will also have several picnic areas throughout the park, some with individual picnic tables, as well as large picnic areas, a restroom, and then also three separate play areas for playgrounds. I'll go into a little bit more detail on some of those items. So, for the event lawn, again, very multipurpose area, can be used for several things. In terms of capacity for large events, it can hold about 2,500 people in a seated event. Standing events, about 2,000. Movies in the park, about 500 folks. And then in the pathways around the event lawn, there's space for 14 food trucks, so again, gives a really nice platform for a lot of different programming opportunities. And then along with that, we've also been studying how to light the area at night, as most of these events will be occurring at night, both from a safety perspective and from a maintenance perspective, wanting to make sure that there is enough light in this area. So, we've done several studies, one just looking at white light, and then we're also studying some opportunities to bring in color. And then for the playgrounds, as I mentioned, there are three areas for play. On the west side of the park, at the north area, there's a sensory play area planned, where there'll be the equipment that we're looking at right now really centers around music and play. And then if you move further south, there's an area for two-to-five-year-olds, a tot lot, and then an area for five-to-12-year-olds. So, there'll be three separate play areas along the west side, which will also be nicely along that path, so really bring a lot of activation to that side of the park. And here's just some really preliminary looks at the designs that we're looking at for the different play areas. We're actively in communication with multiple playground vendors, trying to find the right balance of play items, aesthetics, et cetera, to really make this area beautiful. And then, as I mentioned before, the event stage, there is a stage that anchors the event lawn. The architecture of this is really beautiful and is supposed, it will tie nicely into the ribbon effect that we have in Phase 1, really making the whole campus feel cohesive in its design. And then, as I mentioned before, we're working through some concepts in the entry plaza, looking at different signage options to mark your entry to the Garden Grove Civic Center Park. Last time, I believe, we were looking at a longer sign that spelled out Garden Grove. As we've been working through mobility through and around the park, really looking at something that's a bit more condensed to provide better circulation, so we're studying several options in this area right now. And then, as I mentioned before, some fitness equipment, so here's some images of some fitness equipment layouts. And then the park restroom. So, the park restroom will be around the playgrounds, so sort of in between the five-to-12 and the two-to-five lots, so we want to make sure it was as beautiful as well. So, we're looking at some creative technologies potentially to deliver this restroom, and those conversations are continuing. And then, as I mentioned as well, in the southeast corner is where we're looking at the Memorial Grove. You'll notice we have put in the rendering some cherry trees, so thank you so much. I know last time we met, we had offers of donations of cherry blossom trees. They're very beautiful in this area. So, in the Memorial Grove area, we have the cherry blossoms, some beautiful trees. We're also studying in this area a water feature. So, if you look in the bottom right, we're looking at some options for very serene water options to elevate the memorial area, provides some, provide some more calm in the area as well. So, we're studying that as we speak. And then, as we talked about prior, we have several walkways throughout the park. We're going to make sure we're marking the distances around so people can do exercise walks, runs, et cetera, and that might be the end. So, there's been a lot of progress, believe it or not, since the last time we met, so would love any, if you have any questions or feedback, happy to hear it, yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mayor. Just a quick question. When's our next photo op?
Oh.
We were actually talking about that, and I wanted to share with the council-
Thank you, Craig.
-that we were planning to provide additional tours for you all, and we think that we'll work on your schedules, obviously, but maybe towards the end of May, or the beginning of June. And the reason we're highlighting that period of time, because we will start to get in the structural glass, so you will actually be able to see some of the building with the glass on a portion of it. And a lot's going to happen over the next month. The masonry walls will be finished, they'll actually start laying out some of the interior walls, so the metal studs will come in. So, I think it'll be a unique time to go out and see many different elements of the project being built.
Yes, I missed the top out, but I will be at the next one, and I want to report to the public that we have to sign off on a waiver of liability and such and such, so we can't invite the public to these photo ops just yet, but we will be reporting and posting some photos on the website so the public can follow the progress, which is very, very on time, on schedule, and look forward to the next photo op.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. I really liked the signage. I think that condensing it down a bit makes it that more Instagrammable moment, a little easier to photograph and so forth, and I like the idea of playing with the lighting, bringing in the blues. I think that looks really nice. I'm excited, and obviously, we know water has been a part of this conversation since the beginning, so kind of it almost looks like a reflection pool of some sort, right?
Exactly.
So, I think that's nice to be able to sort of reinvent what that could look like and modernize that feature in the park, so it's very exciting. Thank you for the presentation this evening. Any other comments?
Yeah, just a quick comment. It was amazing. At the top, our event, only 18 months or so, I could never thought that we would have the building with everything there, and of course, the set, you have a lot more information about the material and everything, like how many tons of metal and cement, et cetera. But I just want to say, it's a great teamwork from our staff to the builder and everyone that involved. Just thinking about that, I remember when our police chief said that he just wanted to bring his desk and go there and work right now. That's just amazing. That just showed you the feeling, the great feeling that we all have, and we cannot wait to see at the end of this. But I'm thinking, when I'm sitting here, I want to look to see if there's any way that they have the teamwork over somewhere. We're going to have to submit our city for that. I don't know if anyone else could say that within 18 months, from, you know, just the beginning to now where we at, I don't, I can't imagine that, but thank you so much. Great job from everybody. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And really, it truly has been an amazing team effort, so we appreciate everyone, everyone's support of this all the way. You can't achieve something like this without that full support, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
We have, let's see. Actually, I think at this time, we're going to move to Consent and Poll. Items 5 and 6, since we have folks in the audience this evening to receive these proclamations, so I need to take a vote here if I can pull Items 5 and 6.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Wonderful. And then Assistant City Manager Ursula Luna Reynosa will read each proclamation for us this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. First proclamation for Item 5 is adoption of a proclamation celebrating May 1st through 7th as Youth Week, and at this time, I'd like to invite up Stephanie Janji with the Garden Grove Elks number 1252 and the related team up while I read the proclamation. Come on up. And special guest.
And Elroy.
Elroy, come on up. Thank you. So, whereas the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks has designated May 1st through 7th as Youth Week to honor America's junior citizens for their accomplishments and to give fitting recognition of their services to community, state, and nation, and whereas Garden Grove will sponsor an observance during that week in tribute to the junior citizens of this community, and whereas no event could be more deserving of our support and participation than one dedicated to these young people who represent the nation's greatest resource and who in the years ahead will assume the responsibility for the advancement of our free society, and whereas our youth need the guidance, inspiration, and encouragement which we alone can give in order to help develop those qualities of character essential for future leadership, and whereas to achieve this worthy objective, we should demonstrate our partnership with youth, our understanding of their hopes and aspirations, and a sincere willingness to help prepare them in every way for the responsibilities and opportunities for citizenship. Now, therefore, the Garden Grove City Council does hereby proclaim the first week in May as Youth Week in Garden Grove, and urge all our citizens to participate wholeheartedly in this observance. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, on behalf of the Garden Grove Elks Lodge, who's been serving the community now for 70 years and partnering up with the city on a lot of different projects- projects, we want to say thank you for this proclamation. And our youth activities are just, are endless. I've just got one little list of things we did for the last year. I won't read them all. But we do things like host Christmas parties for the families and children in our local area and delivered Christmas gifts to over 120 needy families this past Christmas. We have awarded 3,000 scholarship money to three high school students. We've held winter coat drives at the local Title I elementary schools and delivered over 342 winter coats to kids who otherwise, you know, that may not get a coat for the winter season. And just a list of things that we do at the lodge, because it's all about the kids and the vets in the community. And we appreciate your support. And if anybody would like to join us, I do have an extra membership application with me today. I know we have a few members here on the board, so. Hello, Stephanie. Anyway, thank you very much for this. This is great. We proudly display it in our lobby, so everybody can see that, you know, that we have a partnership with the city, and the proclamation means a lot to us. Thank you. [applause]
I can see her. She's hidden behind her.
Yeah.
More this way?
Move over.
Cindy, move over.
Okay, look this way. There you go.
I think four, make sure we don't get hurt.
Elroy is a big part of our youth drug awareness program, so he's an integral part of there.
Thank you.
All right, I will move on to the next proclamation, item number six, adoption of a proclamation celebrating May as Jewish American Heritage Month. And I would like to invite up Joshua Schaefer with the Jewish Community Action Network, and Rabbi Steven Einstein as well. So please come on up. Whereas Jewish American Heritage Month is celebrated every May to honor the significant contributions and rich history of Jewish Americans to the fabric of our nation. And whereas Jewish Americans have played a vital role in shaping the cultural, economic, scientific, and social landscape of the United States, contributing to the advancement of arts, education, business, medicine, and public service. And whereas the Jewish community in Garden Grove has been an integral part of our city's diverse and vibrant cultural mosaic, bringing with them a deep commitment to family, faith, and community. And whereas Jewish Americans continue to foster mutual understanding, tolerance, and respect, promoting the values of equality, justice, and liberty. And whereas it is important to recognize the experiences, resilience, and strength of our Jewish Americans, as well as their ongoing contributions to our society. And whereas the celebration of Jewish American Heritage Month provides an opportunity to reflect on the historical struggles and achievements of Jewish Americans and to celebrate the enduring spirit of the Jewish community in Garden Grove and beyond. Now therefore, the Garden Grove City Council does hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month in Garden Grove, to celebrate the history, culture, and contributions that Jewish Americans have made to American society and the city of Garden Grove.
[applause]
Madam Mayor and members of the council, thank you very much. I'm very honored to be here this evening to receive this proclamation. I do feel called at this moment on behalf of the Jewish community. I am the Senior Rabbi in Orange County, having served since 1974, to express condolences on the part of our community, to the Catholic community of Orange County on the loss of the Holy Father. I am one of the founding members of the Catholic Jewish Dialogue, which meets right here in Garden Grove at Christ Cathedral each month. And so this is a very moving time for Father, the Holy Father, Pope Francis, who's not only the leader of his church, but was a great humanitarian who really showed the way for all of us of how we can reach out to one another and see the humanity in one another. You're all aware, I think this is probably part of the background of receiving this particular proclamation, that there's been a tremendous rise of antisemitism over the last number of years throughout our world, throughout our country, and yes, even here in Orange County. This is nothing new. Jews landed here in North America in 1654, escaping from the Inquisition. They arrived at New Amsterdam, which later became New York. The governor of New Amsterdam, we may remember from our American history, was a guy by the name of Peter Stuyvesant. He didn't much care for Jews and really didn't want them to enter. But he allowed them to come in on one condition. And that is that they would never become a burden on the society. They accepted that condition. And our community has stood behind it through these hundreds of years. Not only have we not become a burden on the society, but as you know, in so many ways, have contributed greatly to society. It is a joy for us to be able to extend hands one to the other and to know that the only way forward is for us to build together. And so, Madam Mayor and members of the council, I did notice that there was not even one dissenting vote, so that was pretty good. I've been on the Fountain Valley School Board, so I know what it's like to be on the other side of the table, you know. Anyway, thank you very much.
[applause]
All right, we'll move into oral communications. I do have several pink cards. First step will be Manuel Pineda.
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Good evening, gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for allowing me at this time to sit here and speak. It's my turn, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me these few minutes, real quick, these three minutes. I have three death certificates with, right here with Garden Grove Hospital. We had a big problem here from the first two. Now we have a huge problem. I have the third one, the new one, the amended one, the correction statement form. Spoke with the lawyer at the Garden Grove Hospital, sent me a letter, told me the individual that gave up information to sit there and contact him. I said, I don't want to talk to nobody. Missing information right here, the representation for the legal, where Mr. Christopher Doan said. Anyhow, there's three death certificates. I need the mayor to sit there and step up, kind of help me out here. I went to your police department, we knew evidence, to sit there and help open up this closed case with the coroner's office. I spoke with the coroner's office themselves. They said they're finding an agency. I spoke with them, trying to sit there and get the case open with them. But here we are, we have a huge problem now. This is not good. It went to a wrongful cremation from Orange County to LA, center body to LA Montebello, Barbara Rishner Mortuary. This is really, really terrible stuff that we're dealing with here in the city of Orange. I mean, Garden, Orange County, California, where a tiny, needed community even in Garden Grove. We have to sit there and correct this with the city, with this, here in the city, with the hospital. Yeah, I mean, we have all this information that's no good. Yeah, I mean, what happened? Yeah, I mean, I need the mayor to sit there and help me out here. Yeah, I mean, especially with this law giving me, you know, this letter. Yeah, I mean, Christopher Doan. This is ugly. This is terrible what took place since 2016, three death certificates. You know, I am married. I've been telling everybody from day one, now we need to sit there and get to the root of the problem. The Funeral Bureau of Investigations is on it with the medical board enforcement. You know, I did go to the Garden Grove Police Department, we knew evidence just here, just before I came here, to sit there and seek assistance for this. Yeah, I mean, hopefully they'll sit there and go get that video and see who left or their drop dropped took there. Garden Grove Hospital scared to deal with me, they fear for their lives, he said. I said, geez. So just something to think about, something we still have to sit here. We'll figure this out together, but we got to sit there. You know, the people that gave up false information, I even wanted them arrested. This is not good. At the end of the day, it's going to sit there, it's going to be ugly, especially when we retrieve our phone records and we talk to witnesses. They'd have a good one. We'll see each other here shortly again. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Next speaker will be Raquel Soto.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Last meeting, I came and talked about this homeless issue I'm having in the riverbed, and I want to thank you. Man, you guys moved quickly. People came out, lots of stuff took place, and I think you guys were able to realize that the problem was a lot bigger than I think anybody even realized. So I just wanted to tell you guys thank you. Lots of police were out, truckloads of debris. It was crazy. But I wanted to say thank you, and I just want to encourage you guys to keep it up. The problem continues. But I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate the swift action. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kyle Mason.
Good evening, y'all. As you heard from her, and I'm here to thank you guys, too. I'm glad you guys did come down and raid the place. They took four big truckloads of stuff. They arrested three people. They're probably already released. Two guys were underneath there in that room. They didn't even know there was a room down there, the police. And the two guys were down there for over two weeks, haven't seen daylight. And they're still going down there. And I got pictures right now. They're climbing, they're already back down there. Again, we need to put a jail door down there so they can't get in there. It will allow the water to go out. Cindy, you went down there. And if you did go down there, did you go in and see that room? If you did, then you'll see how big those holes where the water comes from each neighborhood. If they make the jail door bars that wide, there's nothing that big is going to be, any bigger than what those holes are coming from each one. It'll all drain out. There's no reason why they can't put a door down there or a solid wall, a jail wall, so the water will come out and drain. I don't understand why they don't do that. Again, this whole weekend, you ought to see there's like over 20-some people. They're already back down there again. It's like nothing happened. In fact, they're even hollering and screaming at me, threatening me, flipping me off, and the whole nine yards. In fact, I have a picture right here with the guy flipping me off. I've showed a lot of the people around. And a lot of these pictures can be used to probably hold against these people for trespassing. I mean, how many times do they have to be caught and held? And we can get them out of here and get them out of the area and clean up the area. So, but again, I'm so thankful the police came. These guys, they're awesome. So again, thank you, Mr. Brown, Sergeant Brown. Really appreciate all the work you guys are doing. And the mayor, I hope you guys, and Philip, please continue and don't stop. Keep coming down there. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes oral communication. I don't see any other pink cards or anyone wishing to speak. So we do have a written communication. Madam Clerk?
This evening for written communication, we have consideration of a written request from the Korean American Seniors Association of Orange County for cosponsorship of the facility rental fee for use of the community meeting center on October 3, 2025. And Community Services Director John Montanes is here to provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Staff received a written request on behalf of the Korean American Senior Association of Orange County requesting cosponsorship of the facility's rental fees for the use of the community meeting centers A and B rooms on Friday, October 3, 2025. This facility use request will serve approximately 300 senior citizens, including members of the city's H. Lewis Lake Senior Center, to celebrate the mid-autumn Korean Thanksgiving Day, which is one of the most significant and cherished traditional holidays in Korean culture, celebrated for centuries as a time to express gratitude, strengthen family bonds, and honor the Korean heritage. The association is a 501(c)(3) organization established in 1977 in Garden Grove. The organization has about 1,500 regular members and currently provides welfare, food, educational service to approximately 3,000 seniors in Orange County. Staff has verified that the association is in good standing with the California State Secretary's Office and the Internal Revenue Services. The in-kind contribution to the cosponsorship date request for the use of the community meeting center A and B rooms by a nonprofit organization is approximately $1,343.50. It is recommended that the city council consider this cosponsorship request from the Korean American Seniors Association of Orange County. And this concludes my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, questions, comments, or a motion?
Move it.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right. At this time, we will recess and conduct other legislative business. We'll move on to the successor agency. And Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Member Bredeham?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Tran?
Here.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Adestegi?
Here.
Vice Chair Munyaton?
Here.
And Chair Klumpenstein?
Here. We already acted on oral communication, so we have one item under our consent. We'll entertain a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we'll adjourn. And we will head to Sanitary District. We've already done oral communication. I'm sorry, roll call, please, sorry.
Member Bredeham?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Munyaton?
Here.
Member Adestegi?
Here.
Vice President Tran?
Here.
And President Klumpenstein?
Here. All right, we've already done oral communications. We'll move on to the consent calendar. We have four items under consent.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Any matters from board members? All right, seeing none, we will adjourn and head back to city council. We still have items seven through 15 under consent. I'll entertain a motion unless someone would like-
All right, at this time, we will recess and conduct other legislative business. We'll move on to the successor agency. And Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Member Bredeham?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Tran?
Here.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Adestegi?
Here.
Vice Chair Munyaton?
Here.
And Chair Klumpenstein?
Here. Uh, we already acted on oral communication, so we have one item under our consent. Uh, we'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we'll adjourn. And we will head to Sanitary District. Uh, we've already done oral communication. I'm sorry, call, uh, roll call, please, sorry.
Member Bredeham?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Munyaton?
Here.
Member Adestegi?
Here.
Vice President Tran?
Here.
And President Klumpenstein?
Here. Uh, all right, we've already done oral communications. We'll move on to the consent calendar. We have four items under consent.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters from board members? All right, seeing none, we will adjourn and head back to City Council. Uh, we still have items seven through 15 under consent. I'll entertain a motion unless someone would like to pull an item.
Second.
Uh, motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, that moves us on to item 16 of a public hearing.
Yes, this evening, we have a public hearing for the approval of the 2025 through 2030 Consolidated Plan and the Fiscal Year 2025 through 2026 Action Plan, and we have Mr. Timothy Throne here to provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Purpose of the item before you is to conduct a public hearing regarding the 2025-2030 Consolidated Plan and Fiscal Year 25-26 Action Plan, and to authorize submission to HUD. In 1995, HUD established the CON Plan as a long-term planning document for state and local governments that receive annual grant funding from HUD. The CON Plan is intended to help jurisdictions assess their affordable housing and community development needs, analyze local market conditions, and helps jurisdictions make data-informed funding decisions. The planning process provides a framework for a community-wide dialogue that identifies housing and community development goals and priorities. The goals and priorities that are developed through the CON Plan guide our HUD funding over the next five years. So the CON Plan is a three-part document that consists of, one, the Housing and Community Development Needs Assessment, which provides a profile of the community and its development needs through the analysis of local demographics, housing market and inventory conditions, and an inventory of existing affordable housing. Two, the Five-Year Strategic Plan, which outlines the jurisdictions' available community development resources and identifies its housing and community development goals and priorities for the upcoming five-year period. And then lastly, there's a Year One Action Plan, which is Fiscal Year 25-26 for this CON Plan. The Action Plan provides specific information describing the jurisdictions' proposed programs, projects, activities, designed to address the goals and priorities outlined in the jurisdiction's CON Plan. Various methods and data collection, uh, I'm sorry, various methods of data collection were utilized in preparation of the CON Plan, including surveying residents, program beneficiaries, agencies, service providers, nonprofit organizations, housing developers, and city departments, as well as community workshops and stakeholder meetings, and lastly, housing and demographic data. The following are housing and community development goals and priorities that have been identified for the next five years. Provide decent and affordable housing, address the needs of homeless individuals and those at risk of homelessness, provide community and supportive services, address public facilities and infrastructure, promote economic development and employment opportunities, and provide for planning and administrative activities. Moving into the Fiscal Year 25-26 Action Plan, approximately 2.9 million in HUD funds will be available during Fiscal Year 25-26. This budget includes approximately $677,348 of previously unallocated HUD funds from prior year's entitlement allocations, as well as a new entitlement allocation of 2.3 million. During Fiscal Year 25-26, HUD funds will address a wide range of housing and community development activities, which includes public services, and we recommend funding to the special resource team um, for $48,000 to assist 200 homeless individuals with referrals to emergency shelter and services. We've, are planning to fund the Senior Center, $155,000 to assist 500 seniors. Funding recommended for Meals on Wheels of Orange County, $20,000 to assist 140 seniors with home-delivered and congregate meals. Funding Stand Up for Kids, $50,000 to provide 18 transitional-aged youth with workforce development assistance through the WARP Program. Next is public facilities and infrastructure. $700,000 in CDBG funds is recommended for the Glen Street Rehabilitation Project and is projected to assist 6,335 individuals. Moving on to owner-occupied housing rehab, so 160,000 in CDBG funds will be allocated to Habitat for Humanity, as well as ZUR Development to complete 20 rehab projects for single-family homeowners in Garden Grove. Next, we have economic development. We recommend funding upwards of 130,000 to assist 16 childcare agencies. In Garden Grove, build capacity and expand operations through the Boost Program. We, we also recommend funding, uh, the MicroBiz Program, $539,500, which will provide technical and financial assistance to 40 Garden Grove microenterprises. Additionally, we have affordable housing, and we recommend funding Interval House, $250,000 in home funds to continue the tenant-based rental assistance program called HEART, and they plan to assist 14 households, homeless households, homeless and at-risk households, I'm sorry. And then lastly, we have Emergency Solutions Grant. So, street outreach, we recommend funding Volunteers of America, 49,000, and Stand Up for Kids, 20,000 to provide outreach and essential services to 55 homeless individuals. Emergency Shelter, Interval House, will be funded at 25,000 to assist 25 individuals with shelter and essential services. And then Rapid Rehousing and Homeless Prevention, we are recommending funding to Stand Up for Kids at $74,000 to assist eight homeless and at-risk households with rental assistance and supportive services. And then Homeless Management Information System, Orange County United Way, will be funded at $5,256 to manage the county's coordinated entry system. And then last but not least, we have administration. So approximately 436,000 in CDBG, home, and ESG is recommended for administration. There is no financial impact to the general fund. The proposed Fiscal Year 25-26 Action Plan will allow the city to access approximately 2.3 million in new entitlement grants and then 677,348 in unexpec, uh, unexpended prior year funds. Sorry, I have trouble with that one. The allocation of HUD funds effectively leverages competitive grants and the city's general fund. Staff recommends that City Council conduct a public hearing to receive comments concerning the consolidated and action, and action plans, and then direct staff to submit the consolidated plan and action plan to HUD for approval, and lastly, authorize the city manager to execute agreements and make modifications on behalf of the city. Concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. So at this time, before I open the public hearing, are there any questions of staff?
Yeah, I have a question. First, thank you guys so much for providing such a detailed and wonderful report. I'm really glad that you guys included so many important things that I think our community is really gonna make use of. Um, I, I love that we're focusing so much on partnerships with so many local, uh, organizations. Um, I think it's important for our residents to understand, uh, where this money is coming from uh, and how it's decided that this money is going to come our way, right? So we have a certain amount of money from the Department of Housing and Urban Development that is going, that will be allocated. But how does HUD decide how much money a, a city like Garden Grove receives?
So there are various factors in, in terms of how HUD decides that, and most of it's based on population and, and really the size of the cities. Um, they put city, different cities in small, medium, and large cities, and the allocations are based on the population, probably, and census data.
Okay, thank you so much, Tim.
And just, just to add to that, not every city is what's called an entitlement city, which Garden Grove is. So as a direct entitlement city, we get these funds directly from HUD to implement these programs. But a lot of the other smaller cities are not. That money goes to Orange County, and Orange County then distributes it based on a competitive process for those other, other cities. But there's a formula that HUD uses to establish who's an entitlement city and then how those funds are distributed.
Thank you.
All right, um, another question?
Um, just a quick note. Um, thank you for the detailed report. One thing that I want to point out is the Micro, um, MicroBiz Program.
MicroBiz Program?
Yeah, so this time, we have more than 500,000 dedicated for that. So I do want to bring that up so that way, the business out there, that if you need help, please contact our city staff. And that is something that you actually could make use and would help you with, um, running your business or expand and things like that. So I just want to point that out, but great job, and I'm looking forward to see some of our businesses to come to the staff, and we'll see you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll open the public hearing. There's so many people here to speak on this item. Uh, I, I see no one here, no pink cards, no one in the, in the audience, so with that, I will close the public hearing. Colleagues, any other discussion on this item? Have a motion and a second. You know, every year, we hear this, and I think, I wish there were a full house of people to hear this report. Thank you, as always, for your organized, organized report. Everything's so detailed. It's wonderful see, to see the work that's being done in the city. I, as always, invite the community to look this up. This is all public record on the city website. Please, it's not light reading, but it's important reading. And it really shows, I think, the, just the, the really important work, the heartfelt work, uh, that's going on in our community.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to items for consideration, number 17.
This evening, item number 17 is adoption of resolutions ratifying the 180-day wait-period exemptions to rehire, to hire retired innuitants, and City Attorney Sandoval will provide the report.
Mayor, members of the City Council, uh, we have two recent retirees that the City Council agreed to bring back uh, on a temporary part-time basis due to their knowledge and skills and the need to, uh, to have them assist the city moving forward. Um, and the two are Rebecca Meeks and Jeff Davis. While we follow all of the, or most of the requirements of state law to bring in, to bring them back, there is one requirement that we missed, and that is that the law says that the approval cannot be done or the appointment cannot be done in, on a consent calendar. So that normally means that, uh, we need to have a staff report on the record. And so today, we are providing the staff report for the record and are going to be recommending that City Council adopt two new resolutions simply ratifying the action that the council took, uh, back in December and at your last meeting. Um, so in terms of Rebecca Meeks, she, uh, has worked for the police department for over 30 years, I believe, and she was in charge and records, uh, manager there. And the department in 2021 purchased and began building the Axon Public Safety Software Suite. Uh, you may recall that the city purchased Axon cameras, uh, body-borne cameras, and also for the vehicles uh, for our police officers. And, uh, once we implemented the cameras, a software to manage the videos and manage, uh, the information, the old system was not fully compatible. So we started purchasing more and more, uh, software from Axon in order to implement the software, you know, implement the use of those cameras, and now we expanded it for these other suites to do, to help in report writing and, you know, keep the information in a database. And so Rebecca was instrumental. It was in charge in implementing these programs. Uh, she retired, and so we need her to continue, uh, to provide assistance on a part-time basis while the, 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 the programs are fully implemented. And we expect that to occur within this year. Uh, so she's being brought back for one year. Uh, a salary, um, of $56.86 per hour, and that's all the salary she's, she's entitled to. She will not be getting any other benefits that regular employees would get. Um, as to Jeff Davis, uh, you know him very well from Channel 3. Uh, the city does have a cable channel where we broadcast meetings and also broadcast recordings of major events that occur in the city, uh, such as the Strawberry Festival, the State of the Union, and many of the other events that we have. Uh, we have, I know the city has hired a replacement, but Jeff, having had over 35 years of experience in that position, and actually even before that, uh, we had a contract with Tom Warner, and Tom Warner actually hired him to do the recording for Channel 3 when Tom Warner was in charge. Uh, then the Telecommunications Act changed in the 2016. Tom Warner was not required to provide the actual, uh, recordings and, and, and individuals, and so they were gonna stop the program, so the city brought the program in-house and ever since has been within the city manager department. Actually, it, it jumped to community services, city manager, community service, city manager. Today is in the city manager's department. And so, uh, Jeff Davis, uh, is, was asked to come back, uh, as, again, part-time temporary employee or retiree uh, to assist with, uh, the programming for this year and also to help train the new employees that were hired to, to fill that, uh, that position. Um, Jeff is going to be, uh, receiving $56.86 per hour. Uh, and again, no other benefits are going to be provided, so it's a straight, um, hourly wage. Uh, he is capped at 960 hours per fiscal year, and the dollar amount that he's getting paid is a formula that CalPERS has adopted. And so we, you know, that's the formula that applies for those positions for both Rebecca and Jeff. Um, that is the, the report, uh, that we needed to provide on the record. Uh, but if you have any questions, I'll be happy to punt to someone else. Just kidding. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have. Um, if not, the recommendation is to adopt the two resolutions that would ratify the actions that the council took back in December and at the last meeting.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions?
I'll move it. Um, just, those are both very, uh, dedicated employees who have an expertise that the city continues to need, and, uh, I'm grateful to bring them back.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, on to item 18.
Item 18 is approval of an amendment for a two-year extension to the agreement with Allied Universal Security Services for jail operation services, and Police Chief Alfara is here to provide the report.
Madam Mayor and City Council members, I'm here to ask for your approval of a two-year extension with Allied Universal Security Service for jail operations. We would prefer that extension due to the continuity of operations while we move into the new police building. This contract will take us through June of 2027. Uh, they are a proven commodity within the county servicing other cities with jail operations, and we have that consistency of that jail personnel operating within our city. The fiscal impact for the two years is approximately 1.85 million. It is recommended that the City Council approve this extension of jail operations in the budget and authorize the city manager a designate to execute this agreement. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions, colleagues?
Could we get clarification on what services this actually, for the public, what this actually encompasses?
The jail operations, it's just a very effective and efficient way for our, uh, police department to operate. We contract with Allied, uh, Security Services to handle that. Um, they handle the transportation of our, um, arrestees who will be going into the county facilities. So they take them down to, uh, Orange County Jail, where they are processed, have to stand by sometimes for extended hours, which actually frees up our officers to maintain their position on the streets and serve our community here in Garden Grove.
Thank you.
Great. Second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, item 19.
Item 19 is authorization for the issuance of a purchase order with Dooley Enterprises, Inc. for police department ammunition, and Chief Alfara is here to provide that report.
I'll simply say we need ammo, but the, the, the contract, the contract is an annual contract of $140,000 for five years. Um, it is for training ammunition as well as on debt, on-duty ammunition. And obviously, there are requirements within the police force that our officers qualify uh, through the police officers and standards training up in Sacramento, and we meet those standards by ensuring our officers are not only meeting that minimal requirement by them, but we extend it even that much further to make sure they're proficient in all weapon systems that they utilize in the police department.
Thank you, Chief.
Again, this is, I mean, we want to make sure our police officers, we don't want them to shoot, but if they do have to shoot, we want them to hit the target that they're shooting at. So, uh, I'll make the motion.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Agree.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Uh, item 20, we're moving right along.
Item 20 is authorization for the issuance of a purchase order to OC Wind Water Works for the purchase of fire hydrant guards, and Public Works Director Bill Murray is here to provide the report.
Ms. Vasquez, Mrs. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, City Council is being asked to award a purchase order to OC Wind Water Works for 100 fire hydrant guards. The guards should prevent the rapid discharge of water resulting from a fire hydrant being hit. This purchase order will be part of an in-house project to help reduce water losses from occurring in our system. Water loss is a focal point of the state, and this project will help lower our current 7.6% water loss rate. It should be noted that municipalities typically see It should be noted that municipalities typically see from ten to sixteen percent water losses in their systems. These losses are a combination of real losses like leaks and breaks, and apparent lossage like theft and inaccurate meters. Staff received and opened six qualified bids on March seventeenth of this year, and determined that OC Wind Water Works was the lowest responsible bidder with a bid of just over two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, the company will deliver the product within the next two months. This purchase order will be paid for using water funds. This concludes staff's report, I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Try saying wind water works three times fast, geez. Do I have a motion or comment?
Yeah, um, same thing, um, yes, I'll make the motion, uh, I know many kids are going to be very disappointed because in the summer when those things get sheared off, they like to run out there and, you know, get wet and play in the water, but, uh, yeah, it will save water, so we'll make the motion.
I second, yeah.
I would just want to drop a fun fact, because I asked this question of staff when, uh, we were reviewing the agenda for this week, because I was curious, like, how many fire hydrants do we have in the city of Garden Grove? And as it results, we have forty-one hundred fire hydrants in the city of Garden Grove, so have that in your pocket for trivia night.
Thank you, Councilwoman, that's a lot more than I would have assumed, that's.
I too was shocked.
All right, we have a motion and a second, call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, we are on to ordinances presented for a second reading, item twenty-one.
This evening, we have a second reading and adoption of ordinance two-nine-six-four entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Zoning Map Number A dash zero four one dash twenty-two-five", "To amend the city's official zoning map to change the zoning of a one point seven-three acre portion of the parcel located on the south side of Santa Catalina Avenue, northwest of Santa Barbara Avenue, between Valley View Street and Saint Mark Street, at five-eight-zero-two Santa Catalina Avenue, assessors parcel number two-two-four dash two-one-two dash oh-one, from an R-one single-family residential to an R-three multifamily residential zone to facilitate the development of a twenty-six unit residential attached townhome project on the subject site."
Uh, motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, we are on to matters, we will start with District Six this evening.
Hello, hello, everyone. Um, I will start off by, um, by sharing in, uh, the grief that a lot of our community has over the, the passing of His Holiness, uh, Pope Francis. Um, I, I am a Catholic, um, I am a parishioner at Christ Cathedral, um, and Pope Francis has just been such, uh, a wonderful, uh, leader for not just the Catholic community, but I think, uh, a, a leader as a whole in terms of what a wonderful humanitarian he's been, and, um, what an environmental activist he's been. So, I know that, uh, I think by the next city council meeting, uh, where we meet, we might, we might have a new Pope, but we might get to say Abemus Papum, uh, so hopefully next time we see each other, the conclave will have finished. Um, we'll know who the new leader is, but, um, I just want to say that, um, you know, I, I joined with so many of you guys, uh, in, in just feeling this tremendous loss, uh, and, um, you know, I'm hoping that we're gonna continue to stay, um, unified and have, you know, leadership that is going to set an example for, for all of us, uh, regardless of, of our individual faiths, because I think that's, uh, really important. So, uh, having said that, I want to move on to some more cheerful news. Um, I want to congratulate the students at Eisenhower Elementary for having completed a very wonderful run of their Aladdin Junior performances. Uh, they get the opportunity to do these musical performances through grant funding that they receive from Disney, um, and they're able to afford, uh, these great costumes, and they're able to put on wonderful productions and do multiple shows. And let me tell you, I think they did at least six performances, uh, of this play, they had like matinees and everything, uh, and I was just so impressed by the wonderful work that the kids had done, and the, the kid actors were just so amazing, so I look forward to continuing to attend, uh, their wonderful performances in future years, and, and I hope that more of our Garden Grove schools have the opportunity to, uh, be in this kind of programming, because it was just so amazing to see the kids light up on stage, um, and just see all the amazing talent that we have here in Garden Grove. So, congratulations to all the Eisenhower Eagles, that was so much fun. Also had the, uh, wonderful opportunity to attend the Orange County Fire Authority push-in ceremony, um, here at Station Eighty-One, and, uh, we had a great time, um, welcoming in the new fire engine, um, and, you know, got a chance to meet a lot of the firefighters there, uh, and talk to them and hear about the work that they do. We got, uh, the opportunity to go on a tour, um, and we just learned a lot about our Orange County firefighters, um, and the great work they do for us here in Garden Grove. So, congratulations to our neighbors across the street, um, and if you see them, uh, see the new fire engine, just, you know, go say hi, wave hi to them, they're awesome, they're amazing. So, I also, I hope everyone had a happy Easter. We attended the excavation this weekend, so to our Community Services Department, I just want to say congratulations on a wonderful event, everyone had a lot of fun, and thank you for that excellent petting zoo. There was a Highland cow. There was a baby Highland cow, and I, I, I don't think you guys understand, like, how thrilling it was for me to see a baby Highland cow, but, um, it was there, it was cute, um, it was not on Instagram, it was like before, I got to pet it. Um, and like, these are, and if I'm excited about this, and I am a thirty-three-year-old, just imagine how excited the kids were that they got to pet the cow and all the little sheep and the goats, and it was just so amazing to see the kids having such a great time. So, I hope that we continue to bring back this wonderful petting zoo in the future excavations, because the kids were just having the time of their lives, uh, and so was I. So, uh, speaking of other community events, I want to mention that, uh, tomorrow, Wednesday, uh, we have communities come together with Andy and Aiden. Uh, we, we acknowledge Autism Awareness Month, uh, during our consent items today. Um, I want to make sure that we highlight Andy and Aiden's safety group. They do wonderful work here in the, in our local community, um, advocating for kids that are on the spectrum and, uh, providing them with opportunities to, to learn, to experience, uh, life in really cool ways, and also, uh, to really, um, encourage them to learn about safety. And tomorrow, they have an event here at the CMC from five PM to seven PM, um, in conjunction with our Orange County Fire Authority and our Garden Grove Police Department, um, and they're going to be have a bunch of resources, they're going to be doing workshops, and the emphasis of this event is water safety, so this is an event that's open to all families. Uh, come, oh, come on over and learn about water safety, um, meet our resource, meet some of the folks in our departments and get access to community resources. Uh, it's going to be a lot of fun, we will be there. Uh, so, if you want to learn more about that, please come join us here at the CMC tomorrow from five PM to seven PM. We also have Beautify Buena Clinton, which is happening on Saturday, April twenty-sixth from nine AM to one PM. Um, and this is a, an event in conjunction with, um, Buena Clinton Community Resource Center, um, our code enforcement team and several community groups. There's going to be volunteers there, we're going to be beautifying the local area. There will be some community resources there, uh, bulky item pickup, um, just work to really make our community there beautiful and to fix everything up so we can all feel really proud of where we live. Um, another reminder for all of our Garden Grove residents is, and especially the District Six residents, because we are notorious for not joining this, but I want to make sure to really encourage you, if you live in District Six especially, that the Garden Grove Gems has extended their application period, their nomination period, all the way to April twenty-eighth. And this is a really wonderful program where you nominate your home, and we, um, honor the most beautiful homes in Garden Grove, and each district gets nominees, uh, and each district is awarded, uh, with like the most beautiful house, and folks get to vote on it. So, you have until April twenty-eighth to go on ggcity.org slash gems to nominate your wonderful home for this recognition, um, and then the voting period goes from May fifth through May nineteenth. So, I hope everyone who's very proud of their frontline goes and nominates themselves for this wonderful recognition so that we get to show off all of the best that we have to offer here in Garden Grove. Go show off all of your wonderful flowers and hedges and all the great things, um, and, uh, make sure to nominate yourself, nominate your neighbors, and take part in this wonderful Garden Grove tradition. Um, and that is all.
Good evening, everyone. I want to start off by acknowledging that today is Earth Day, a day to recognize around the world as a time to reflect on the importance of protecting our environment for future generations. As a city, it is important that we continue to take steps to be environmentally responsible and to lead by example. Recently, I noticed on social media that some city councils in other communities celebrate Arbor Day by planting trees. In particular, the city of Santana had each of their council members plant a tree in their respective districts, helping the, and promoting, uh, environmental, uh, stewardship in a very, in a very visible and meaningful way. I would like to request that our city staff look into the possibility of organizing a similar initiative for next year. Uh, we could open it up to any council member who is interested and willing to participate. This would be a great opportunity to engage our residents, uh, highlight our, uh, commitments and, uh, sustainability, and leave a lasting impact in our neighborhoods. I had, I have a few events I attended. First, I took part in the CAC Awards Ceremony hosted by the Garden Grove Unified School District. The event recognized individuals and groups for their dedication to supporting special education programs. During the ceremony awards, um, we, uh, during the ceremony, awards were presented to students throughout the district. A personal highlight for me was giving high fives to the award recipients and sharing the excite, sharing their excitement and recognition. It was such a wholesome experience, seeing the parents' faces light up as their children were being recognized. I also toured the Magnolia Park Family Resource Center. The tour offered and in-depth looked at the center's program and resources. I learned about various services available, including educational support, counseling, and teen opportunities. I, a personal highlight was meeting, uh, meeting the parent volunteers who love giving back to the community. It was val, it was a valuable experience that deepened my understanding of the vital services provided by the FRC. I had the honor of being a distinguished speaker at the Chamber of Commerce, uh, Government Affairs Meetings, where I provided both District Five and citywide updates. I shared key developments in District Five, ongoing projects and citywide efforts impacting the business community. This meeting also covered opportunities for local businesses to engage with, uh, these initiatives. Afterwards, I connected with a number of attendees, uh, exchanging many business cards and having valuable conversations about future collaboration. It was a great opportunity to network and to contribute to the ongoing growth and success of our city. I hope to be back soon. Another fun event was attending the push-in ceremony for the OCFA Truck Eighty-One. This special event marked an official, an official addition of the new fire truck to the station, a tradition where the community comes together to celebrate the arrival of new, of the new apparatus. After the ceremony, I was fortunate to receive a tour of the station where I had the opportunity to learn more about the equipment, uh, meet the dedicated team, and see firsthand the important work they do to serve our community. It was an honor to witness this moment and to connect with the incredible firefighters of OCFA Truck Eighty-One. I want to give a special thanks to Captain Crane for the tour. This, uh, weekend was, uh, Easter, and I attended, uh, Gar, uh, Garden Grove's annual excavation event at, at, uh, the Atlantis Play Center, bringing my two toddlers along for, for the fun. They had an absolute blast participating in the egg hunts and enjoying the other activities. I want to specially thank the staff and Janet for running such a fantastic program, thank you. Um, their hard work and dedication made the day enjoyable for families, it, and I truly appreciate their efforts in bringing the event, um, in, making the event run smoothly. It was a wonderful experience, and I ha, I look forward to future community events like this one. Lastly, um, at my last council meeting, I requested that the staff look into, uh, crafted, uh, crafting an ordinance that would prohibit advertisement dis, displaying alcohol and drug, um, drugs near schools, youth sport leagues, or youth recreation, uh, centers. I want to thank the staff for already looking into the mural location on the wall of Highland Liquor Store Number Two. I look forward to the conclusion of the matter, hoping that the business voluntarily complies and that, um, and to hear the progress on the proposed ordinance. And on another note, I want to, uh, thank, uh, I want to give a shout-out to my brother, today is his birthday, so happy birthday, Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. I yield my time.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. So, um, couple items. First, um, there will be a walk and talk with, uh, District Three. Um, so, on, um, Saturday, April twenty-sixth, starting at eight to nine-thirty AM, please come and join us. There will be our staff, department head, um, our city manager and mayor, and some others, that probably our police chief gonna be there. Besides, um, going there, talking to our staff, walking, exercise, having fun, I also have a couple businesses that they're gonna bring, um, some snack, food, drink, and also one business will donate, um, ten portable charger and two robot vacuum, which would be, I think it was like two hundred and fifty dollars, it's just something, for Raffle. So, please come, have fun, walk, and, uh, hopefully, um, you will be able to chat with our staff and learn more about what they do. Um, the Black April Memorial, um, yeah, Memorial will be this, um, the April thirtieth at the Vietnam, Vietnamese World Mem, um, yeah, at, uh, one-four-one-eight-zero All-American Way Westminster. So, um, the, um, community just want me to pass information, invite everybody to come and have, um, uh, attend the event and learning more about what, um, we do for Memorial. Next, I want to say thank to our police, the, uh, SRT, and our public work for a great job earlier. One of the residents talking about the cleaning up under the tunnel. Um, if you see the picture, you could just imagine that all the, the item that they found underneath there, but not just that, they have to do the cleanup, um, and with that many trucks, they have to come back again. And our team, our city will work with the county, hopefully that we have more, um, progress make in that area and make it safety for our resident. There's a couple other event that I attend with the council member. Um, we heard earlier about CAC Award excavation. I want to bring up a quick note that, um, thanks to Janet and our staff for a great job. The event was, uh, ticket was sold out, and when I talked to the, the, the kid and the parent, some of the parents come from different city, one from Anaheim, the other one from Fullerton, and one even from Long Beach, they said that they came here every year, and they love the event that we have for kids, safety, and also so many fun thing, um, fae painting, uh, game, uh, music, um, art, so many thing. So, hopefully, next year, if you want to, oh, we actually have many other event. So, if you want to join in that fun, you have to get the ticket early, because it was. it was sold out. Next is the graduation. I know that our city just have the press release. If you, your children or if you graduate this year, make sure you sign up by May twenty-seventh, that's the deadline. It's a very nice ceremony where that you get recognition and also get a lot of raffle items too. So hopefully this year, we're gonna help more graduate. Earlier, we, I heard about Andy and Aiden Group. So this event they do every year, I participated last year, and last year I was able to bring some veteran with their children. So the people out there, yeah, please come, the student will be able to learn about how to do safety thing around when they, in the community or when they're on the street. Another item is the mural. So I talked a couple time about I want to do a cleanup on the tunnel between trash and our Garden Grove Park. So this one, I'm gonna give it out to the community, and I already talked to Bosac Grande High School. We're looking for some artwork that would be used for that, and also we're looking for sponsors who would like to sponsor for that project. Last but not least, we talked about our Holy Father, Pope Francis. I just want to point out a quick thing, his leadership, humility, a servant leader, and also focus on inclusive with everyone around him. That's it for me.
Hello, everybody. I want to start out again by giving information, as most of my colleagues already talk about, as I am a Catholic. I was celebrating the Happy Easter after more than forty days of Lent, then I was also so sad for the Pope getting passed away. So it actually is very my condolence to myself and to all my Catholic friends. Also, today I congratulate Dr. Tru McMahon for being named at Cypress College Twenty Twenty-Five American Award Garden Grove City Citizen of the Year. During the week, I have a chance also as a Garden Grove Council, I have a privilege to attend the push-in ceremony, ceremony of the Garden Grove Station Eighty-One. We have a, a fire truck, a new fire truck, for one point eight million dollars to replace the old twenty-five years truck. And this one definitely will save life, because compared to before, it's only like going up the, like, four stairs, and this new one can go up to seven storage. So, and also it's equipped with many, many new equipments that can save life. I also want to talk about the cleanup, the river bed at Gilbert and Chapman. I not just thank you the Garden Grove Police Department, but also I'd like to thank you our city public works that been there and do a very great cleanup. I have the picture before and after that I show, actually did show my resident, show Karen, everybody else. So I got a lot good comment about it. So I hope in the near future, we'll, we'll get together and do more, do more on that. Also, this week I have a chance to attend the Business Tour at Disneyland. As since you all know, they have like averaged about fifty-five million clients going there. So I want to attend the meeting, because I want to understand about the Disneyland organization to explore the benefit of, for our hotels and small business, from, from what they have clients, and hopefully we can obtain more from them. Thank you.
Well, again, I'd like to echo everyone's sentiments on the Pope. I think he was regarded as a leader, not just with the Catholic community, but with a lot, as the rabbi said earlier, you, you know, he was a recognized leader with all the, with a lot of positive input for all the different religions, so condolences on the passing of the Pope. Hopefully Ariana didn't tip that cow, you know? No cow tipping at the excavation, no?
It was too cute.
Oh, okay, okay, good, good. I was really happy to bring the Jewish American Heritage Month proclamation forward, and thank you, everybody, for doing that. We, you know, the Jewish community in Garden Grove has been very, very strong vocal and, you know, just so many leaders in our city throughout the history of our city, including Tabor Rubin, one of our Medal of Honor recipients in Garden Grove, and his daughter continues to serve our community, and she's currently on our Parks Commission. So we do have a very robust Jewish community here, so I was happy to bring that forward, and thank you guys for supporting that. Again, OCFA Fire Truck Eighty-One Push-In, that was an awesome event. I have never, you know, been to a, a push-in ceremony before. I guess this goes back to the invention of fire departments. Whenever they got a new truck, they had this big ceremony, they pushed it into the fire station, you know, as, you know, you start seeing the cost of those things go up, and the cost of this one point eight million dollars for this new truck. And, you know, its lifespan's probably twenty-five to thirty years, it'll get, you know, but, you know, that, that's just incredible. The old, the old truck was twenty-five years old, so welcome addition. I did pick up the jaws of life in the back of that thing, it's equipped with the jaws of life. I did not realize how heavy those things are. I mean, it is like, you know, I, I want to say close to a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty pounds to lift that. I mean, it's a heavy tool. It's, you know, so when you hear on the news, you know, they had to use the jaws of life, and I mean, it's got to cut through cars and, you know, so it's pretty heavy. So it was a pretty awesome event, so glad to attend that. And again, I think one of the other council members talked about it, the Garden Grove Gems is extended to the twenty-eighth of January, you got to enter your house or your neighbor's house or somebody in the cities. You know, the, the really caveat, you know, is bragging rights to win in your district, you get the gnome, the Garden Grove gnome, and you can't get that gnome, you can't buy it, you can't go, you have to win it. It's the only way. It's one of the most coveted things in the city of Garden Grove is to earn the gnome. And I, I think there's actually a few homes that have earned it more than once, you know? So it's, it's a very coveted thing. So you have to go to the city website, you have to register your address, and I think you upload a photo, if I'm not mistaken. You know, going back to the old days where, you know, I know Stephanie and myself were judges with the old, the old contests where we'd have to drive around all the houses and judge them all, and, you know, it would cost us two hundred bucks in gas to drive around the city, and the city would give us a five-dollar gift card for gas to compensate us, you know? So this, this way is a lot more manageable, a little easier, and, you know, plus, when you're on that website looking, you get to vote for the houses you like. So that's, that's another important part. Go in there, look at the homes and, you know, and cast your vote for the ones you like. And you get to vote for, not just your district, I think you can vote for one or two for each district, so go ahead and take a minute to do that. And that's about all I have.
Thank you very much. You can blame me for bringing that back. It went away for a while, and then I was like, no, we have to have the Home Beautification Awards, but John Montanges and his team had the brilliant idea to streamline it and make it more accessible online, and I think rekindling branding and naming it GG Gems, and so it's a, it's a wonderful addition to the city and a great way to just show our pride in our neighborhoods. Cindy, you mentioned the college graduate reception, and I'd like to circle back to that if I can. If you have recently graduated from a college or university this year, we want to be able to honor you at a very lovely reception that we hold. It's a free event, local graduates will be recognized by all of us here on the council for your hard work and dedication towards achieving your higher education goals. There's opportunities to win cash and prizes, so that's a pretty great incentive. As mentioned, the deadline is Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, and for more information, you can go to ggcity.org/grads, and sponsorship opportunities are still available as well. So I just wanted to make mention of that. We have the Chamber Gala this week, it's been a busy week, lots going on, so we look forward to celebrating businesses that are going to be acknowledged for their special dedication and hard work in the community, as well as Man and Woman of the Year, Mark Sermanian, who runs our Boys and Girls Club here, and our former Assistant City Manager, Maria Stipe. So it'll be fun to celebrate them. And I have been very busy filming for State of the City, that will be coming up in June, more details, but it has been quite an adventure, filming all over Garden Grove and still more filming. So if you see GGTB3 and me out there on the streets of GG, wave and say hi, or come give me the bunny ears or something. So, City Manager Lisa Kim, anything tonight?
Nothing, Madam Mayor and Council.
City Manager, our City Attorney?
Yes, ma'am. We did have a closed session earlier this evening, and there's no reportable action, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we stand adjourned. Have a good evening.